I will now call to February 2nd, 2015, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We honor to have PAC 603 from the First Christian Church that's going to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at the appropriate time. Now if you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, I'm going to have them walk on up and then when I turn around and look at you, you will begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay? All right.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. PAC 603. You did that very well. Want to welcome those of you in attendance as well as those that might listen to the audio later to tonight's city council meeting. Next we have the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second? Roll call please.
Councilman Cobell.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next we will have a presentation by the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce. They had a very successful annual dinner on Friday evening and a lot of us here attended. Was that the 53rd? Was, is that correct?
It was.
The 53rd annual. And I want to congratulate all those that were recognized in different areas and especially the Citizen of the Year, the person that we all know and love, Doc Golden. Citizen of the Year. Very deserving. He's given so much and he will continue to give. So that being said, Ms. Laura Vermillion from the, she's the president of the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce, which is one of our community partners and I consistently tell people, Blue Springs is a great city because of all the community partners and the chamber is very much one of them. So Ms. Vermillion, the ball's in your court.
We certainly agree with that, Mayor Ross. We want to thank the Honorable Mayor and council members for allowing us to be here tonight to give you an update about the Buy Blue Springs program of the chamber and the Discover Blue Springs program. Before I get started, I just want to acknowledge that we have several members of the board and of the committee here in the audience. So can you just wave tonight so that they know that you guys are here tonight as a part of that program? So again, the two programs I'm providing an update for you tonight are the Discover Blue Springs and Buy Blue Springs. The programs are similar but different. The goal of each is to promote spending within our Blue Springs community. The audience for the Buy Blue Springs program is primarily residents and the audience for the Discover Blue Springs program is visitors. We realize though that our residents are the ones helping us carry this message. I'm sure you've seen a chart like this before. This particular chart shows that buying locally has a multiplier effect of four times. I've also seen charts like this that estimate when you spend $100 with a local business that 68 of those dollars stay in the community. There are so many benefits to buying locally, creating jobs and services, generating new payroll, enhancing local infrastructure, generating pride and enthusiasm for local residents. I could go on and on. Here's a similar chart related to spending dollars in travel. That's people from outside our area coming to Blue Springs as visitors and leaving their money with us. Besides all of the benefits of buying locally, resident, increased visitor spending also adds to the taxes paid by our existing residents. I can report to you tonight that we have completed the second year of our second agreement where the city provided the chamber $5,000 each year for two years to promote the Buy Blue Springs and Discover Blue Springs program. For the past three years, the chamber has also collected and put $5,000 from our annual budget to add to the promotion of both programs. The last agreement ran through September 30th, 2014. So tonight we respectfully ask for a renewal of that agreement. Before I get to that, I want to provide an update on both programs. So let's start with the Discover Blue Springs program. Here is a screenshot of the Discover Blue Springs website. Redesign of this website will likely be the project for 2016, but nevertheless, it's still used by people planning visits to our community. Here are some statistics for traffic on that site. As part of our effort with the Discover Blue Springs program this year and to promote visitor spending, we sponsored several area tournaments where we knew visitors would gather. Some of the sponsorships included the Greater Kansas City Football Coaches Association Missouri versus Kansas All-Star Game. We put advertising on the reverse of the ticket for the game on June 19th, 2014. You can see that pictured here. The organizers of this event tells us that it draws over 3,000 spectators, both from Kansas and Missouri. We also sponsored the Woodbat Tournament in July of 2014 and for that event, Parks and Rec reported that there were visitors from North Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, Missouri, Illinois, Arkansas, and Oklahoma, and that estimated attendance was 2,500. Another sponsorship was the Boys Soccer Tournament in the fall of 2013 and the Girls in the spring of 2014, which were both hosted by the Blue Springs School District. At the State of the School District, Dr. Finley reported a $2,148,180 direct impact and a $4,081,542 extended impact. According to the school district, the direct impact is over the first three years of the tournament and the extended impact was based on projected attendance figures for the final two years that they host the tournament. They expect to see an increase this November because the tournament added one additional class. Now four classes instead of three, bringing four more teams and their fans to games. They saw that in November when in spite of the bitterly cold weather, they topped the 6,000 mark in attendance at the Boys Tournament for the first time was over 6,000. They had over 3,700 attend the Girls Tournament in June and they believe they will top 10,000 in attendance this year. That's pretty impactful for our community. They estimate the stay is 2.5 days. So we were able to provide those folks information about our community. Here are some of the other items we continue to produce. We have discussed these with you in the past, so I'll just flip through the slides. These are our community postcards, very popular. We get people stopping in the office to pick these up. No charge for those, by the way. This is a brochure that lists all of the area restaurants, places, parks, hospitals, things that we feel that visitors might need in our community. It's in all of the official State of Missouri tourism sites and handed out in the office and mailed to those visiting and offered to folks that are having conferences. The map, and believe it or not, we still hand out maps in our office every single day. We're going to begin another version of this map very soon. Here's the insert in the city water bill promoting all of the free upcoming community events. Okay, let's move on to the Buy Blue Springs activities and let me update you about what we have been doing in that area. As you may know, the basis for that program is a website, BuyBlueSprings.com. We're currently in the process of upgrading that website because it's about five to six years old. You might remember when we came originally, five years ago, when we started this program, most of our businesses were telling us that they didn't have a website, didn't have a place to put information about their products and services. So the Buy Local website that we created gave them a place to do that. Now what they're telling us is that they do have their own website, they have their products listed on their website and all they want from us is a link to help people find them. In May, we had our second annual Mega Moms Gift Basket. People registered on the Buy Blue Springs website and the winner was announced right before Mother's Day. We had good response from our businesses that placed items in the basket, 114 people registered to win and the winner was a first-time mom. From August 1 through October 1, we held our rendezvous with Little Blue. And sorry for the quality of some of those photos, they were taken mostly with phones and put on Facebook. From August 1 through October 1, we held this contest where we hid a plush Little Blue at nine different businesses in Blue Springs. Each business supplied us with two clues that we posted on Facebook. Participants were to read the clues, find Little Blue, and take a selfie with him at the business and then they posted it to the Facebook page. Each winner, each week a winner was selected and given an American Express gift card. Here are some images from our Facebook page. We post about local businesses. Right on Friday usually, we try to provide suggestions to people about what they can do in our area, upcoming local events. Each month we also have an ad running at the Blue Springs 8 Theater. So I'll flip through some of those. There was one from this summer. There was our Halloween ad. And there's the one that's running currently in the theater. As part of our goal for the Buy Local message, we also attend local community events. We passed out crayons and pencils at National Night Out and Trick or Treat Street. We also distributed pencils at the New Teacher's Breakfast in the fall. And we had a presence at the Blue Springs versus Blue Springs South football game where the cheerleaders distributed mini footballs. New this year, we also co-sponsored the premiere of the Hunger Games movie, Mocking Jay, Part 1, with the Blue Springs 8 Theater. We promoted Blue Springs Night at the Movies. We also did other promotions this year, including the ad shown here in the School District Magazine, which is called Blueprint. That magazine is mailed to all district residents in Blue Springs Independent, Grain Valley, Independence, Grain Valley, and Lee Summit. Here's another sample ad from the spring and another from the summer. We also continue to partner with the Blue Springs School District. We co-sponsor a program to send the Shop Local message over the radio station for the holiday season. Our local businesses share their personal Buy Local message and advertise their business at the same time. This is the third year we have run that program and it's been very successful. On the right, you can see a photo of an interview done on Positive Fully Blue Springs from Pam Wheeler, who's here tonight, about the Buy Blue Springs program. At our November luncheon, we kicked off our Shop Local campaign for the retail holiday season. We gave out doormats, pens, shopping bags. Buy Blue Springs Week always starts the Friday after Thanksgiving and runs through the following Sunday. So the Shop Small Saturday is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And I had one local retailer tell me that this was the most successful Saturday that she's had after Thanksgiving. The promotional items were provided through our affiliation with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and American Express. And here are some photos that we took at the luncheon of our members. The signs say, "You're invited to hashtag Shop Small" and then the name of their business. As part of the winter retail promotion, from November 24 through December 15, we ran a program called our Receipt Reward Contest. We asked our local residents to bring their receipts from Blue Springs businesses to the chamber office during this time period. We were mobbed with people at the office. Everyone that came in, visited, got a chip clip with the Buy Blue Springs website listed and also a Shop Small bag. You can see the picture there. Mayor Ross helped us draw the winner on December 16th at the chamber office. The prize was $500 in American Express gift cards. Mayor Ross said they had to use the cards in Blue Springs or they would explode. So with this program, we collected 2,502 receipts. We saw 220 different businesses represented, some that I didn't even know about, hadn't heard about. And we calculated that $97,044.19 was spent in Blue Springs in those three weeks. And that's just what they reported to me. We enjoyed the personal stories that people shared when they came in and one person told me that she lives very close to Independence Center and she said she always does most of her holiday shopping at that location. But because of this program that we were running, she made a change in her behavior and chose to do her shopping here in Blue Springs. So we think even just with that one Blue Springs resident, that was a win for us. We have a great group of volunteers. They work very hard on the programs. I'm so proud of them and they have so many creative ideas. They continue to generate excitement in our community. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the support that you have provided for both of these programs. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions from the council? If not, this is kinda related, but not totally. And I've asked this question before. If you travel I-70 coming westbound, there are a series of billboards that are fading away. You can hardly make out what it says, but it's the Blue Springs one. I know no one's paying for it and I don't know who owned those billboards to, obviously they're not making any money on it.
Right.
So...
I've asked repeatedly for them to be taken down.
That are, allow us to refresh it or somebody to refresh it to where there's some good pictures that's good and crisp and readable because right now you strain and trying to say, "What does that say?"
Yeah, I've asked multiple times for them to be taken down, but I will reiterate.
Do we know who owned the billboards?
We do.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, whatever we can do to have them to refresh it or take it down would be great.
That was something we did maybe three years ago with our local businesses.
Right.
The Buy Blue Springs program shared some of the costs for that. And you're right, we haven't been doing that program for several years now. So we will reiterate that message, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. If there are no other questions, thank you for the presentation and the update.
Sure.
And that brings us to a resolution approving a contract with the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same same, motion carries, aye. Okay, next we have the introduction and reading of Bill 4359.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
First reading of Bill 4359 and Ordinance Amending Sections 260.110, 700.030, and 715.060, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to permit onsite waste disposal systems when certain criteria is met.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. This is to allow sewer or individual residences to have their own sewer system?
I'm going to defer to staff on that one.
Your Honor, I'd like to defer to our Public Works Director, Chris Sandy, to provide a response to that.
Counselman, yes, it is to allow certain properties that are over three acres to have their own septic system or onsite sewer system where they are away from our sanitary sewer system, more than 300 feet. We have approximately 17 locations that we figured out at this point that would be available to use that. But at this time, we actually have three properties, two on Cook Road and one on Shepherd, that are trying to develop, but the cost is insurmountable to extend sewer to them. And so then we partnered with Lee Summit, Liberty, Kansas City, and Independence to look at their ordinances and make ours match theirs where they would be able to do so. Once the sewer is extended beyond to them and their system is no longer viable, then they would be required to attach to our system.
Okay. One of the concerns I had, I guess, is that we're taking on the review of the sewage system that will not pose any environmental concerns. Seems like to me we'd be better off, we had like MDNR assess that since that's their regulatory...
Actually, it'd be the, Jackson County will be doing the permit on it and they will be assessing the system itself and making sure that it meets the criteria to follow through with MDNR.
Is there any discharge?
Pardon me?
And there's discharge?
There's leachate that goes into the ground and then filters and the fluids evaporate off. In a septic system, if they use a polishing pond, there's actually a grinder system that traps the solids and liquids go out to the pond and evaporate.
Yes.
Just to give the council some additional background on this particular request. This particular request was brought before staff several months ago by a local developer and builder that most of you know, and that's Jim Tharp. Mr. Tharp was representing a property owner, I believe it was off of Cook Road, who had a very large piece of property immediately south of Willow Tree subdivision, several yards away from that. And Mr. Tharp approached us and recognized that he had a landowner that wanted to develop a single family home on this large lot, but it was unable to meet the city's current requirement and connect with the existing sewer system that was in the area. It made the project economically unfeasible. And so we made a commitment to Mr. Tharp that we would explore other best practices with other cities in the eastern Jackson County area. And as Mr. Sandy indicated, we reached out to the City of Independence, City of Lee Summit, and I think he's indicated Kansas City as well and Liberty. And that this proposed change in the code would comply with the best practices of those communities. And also we had extensive communication with Jackson County. So that's kind of the background on how it got before you tonight. We certainly can defer this if the council would require additional information. The request has been very patient with us as we put this information together and they were aware that we'd be bringing it to you tonight for consideration. So if you feel comfortable moving forward with the ordinance that's before you, you can certainly take that action or can table it and have additional conversation or discussion about it.
Councilmembers?
Your Honor, I just have one question and I'm comfortable moving forward, I think. What I wanted to ask was, as I read this this week, if I understand the way it's written and I know there's lots of details about what you have to meet, am I understanding it correctly that this can be done for putting a single family home on a large lot, but you can't then go ahead and further, add further homes or buildings and further connections? It can only be done once and then after that you have to connect in?
That's correct. I'll let Chris...
Predominantly, if you had, we'll say 80 acres and you build a house on it and then split that into two 40-acre tracts and sold it to your son, you would still be able to. But it would not be used to do that repetitively where you could have a subdivision that was on onsite septic.
Okay, Councilman Fowler, that's my question. Thank you.
Is there, I guess, has staff reviewed the potential impact of future development in that vicinity? If somebody is now in a sewer system, is that going to hinder or help development?
Counselman, in our efforts to make sure that that could happen, we actually ask that the property owner dedicate an easement across this property so that it can't be extended and he won't block new development. If a subdivision wants to go in on the other side, they'll have to be given access to get to the sewer to extend it. So it shouldn't block any further development.
We won't have developers saying, "Hey, you know, I'd like to develop this as a subdivision, but all of a sudden I've got somebody with a sewage system, you know, it's going to back up to part of the houses over here."
No, because part of the track that we're talking about, this next Willow Tree, will have to dedicate an easement across the back of the property so the sewer can be extended across it.
Well, why not more than easement? Why don't they have to connect?
Because at this point, in order for them to connect, they'd have to connect into the Willow Tree subdivision, which is effectively a design system for just that subdivision. They'd have to increase the lines to the pump station, increase the pump station and possibly the force main leaving the station. And by the time you do $300,000 worth of work in the sewer system, it's infeasible to build a single house.
I assume that the subdivision that needs the easement would be doing that.
That's correct. But when you spread that $300,000 over 60 different lots, that's a whole lot easier to recover.
So I guess my question is, is if the subdivision was building there?
Yes.
And the person with a sewage system is providing an easement, why wouldn't they be joining at that time and discontinuing the sewage system if there's an easement on their property?
When we looked at that, it didn't make sense to have that. Home owner put in the septic system, I don't know, threw out a cost of $15,000, only to have the sewer line run across the back of this property possibly three years later.
Right.
And then have to spend another $5,000 to tie in and abandon a perfectly good system. So the way the rule's written is that when that system becomes defunct or needs, in need of major repair, then they would attach to our sewer system. They will also be charged sewer while they're set up on the onsite system.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Carter?
I have two. I'm out of my depth here on septic systems, so forgive me on this. What is the life cycle of this septic system? I mean, this is a temporary fix, I'm taking it, right?
So we've got septic systems that have gone 50 years if they're properly maintained.
Okay, all right. And this code update, you're saying it's in line with Liberty and Independence and Lee Summit?
Yes, we took a little bit, we took all the best pieces from our neighbors.
Right.
And put this together and then also tried to make sure that we limited it so that it was just for single-family homes, not for a subdivision and it was in no way designed to be a loophole, be exploited.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Culpepper?
I just want clarification. Councilman Cobell asked about subdividing a piece of property and you said, "Well, if they have 80 acres, they split it in half and then both 40-acre lots, homes on each 40-acre lot could tie into it." So where do you draw the line and say, "Okay, now I have 40 acres, I'm going to split them into 20 acres and now I'm going to divide them down"? Where do you, where do you put a stop to that when you start splitting out those properties?
Basically, you're looking at, if you're going to build a subdivision, you're going to have to build a road and some other infrastructure to go along with it, water lines. You're not just going to attach a service line to a house. And so when those things start popping up as well to have to serve that 80 acres, then that's going to be the line that's drawn. And then in any case, when it comes forward, I believe the last word is the city council. If you don't agree with it, then you can strike it and not allow.
Well, there's, I know that there's several areas, I know of one in particular in Independence where they did that. Mom and dad had a big piece of property and well, now it's like a subdivision, but it's all family and private roads going in. So I, you know, I don't want to run into that kind of a situation. I didn't know where you drew that line.
There is a little bit of room for subjective analysis and what the actual intent of the developer is. In the case of the houses and the 17 sites that we pulled up, they really aren't conducive to a large development, exception of one. And actually, it will eventually be segregated or split by major road. And so at that time, it probably will develop and when it does, it will come into the, it'll have to attach to the sewer system.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Levisay?
To that point that you were just talking about, if a line is run through the property and then they were to split it into 40 acres, at that point, that would also be a trigger to force them to connect to the sewer line itself, wouldn't it? Is that number three there, that if there's an approved onsite wastewater and they split it, then that is a catalyst to connect?
It can be, yes. At that point, it's left to our discretion to say you have to attach now or possibly give them notice that they need to do it within 60 months. Go along those lines.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess the, one of the things that gets me paused on this is that if a line is going across the property, whether for a big subdivision or whatever the case may be, if they can connect, I think that they should. And the reason there is, I think the city is being very generous and allowing single-family residences to have their own sewer system. And I realize the argument that you make, that they may have a substantial investment in this and they didn't see this coming. At the same time, I think we owe it to the other neighbors that would be building around there, that they do connect to the sewer system. So I'll, go ahead.
If I may, I've actually got a map that kind of shows where we have current septic systems that were grandfathered in when people annexed into the city and the proposed locations and maybe this might help make you, give you some more information. That'd be all right?
Those were the annexed in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and they started paying property taxes?
Yes.
Okay, and but these people are already paying property taxes, right?
Yes.
So I guess there's a little bit difference there. Yeah, go ahead.
Chris, while you're going up there, aren't there some capacity issues? You don't have just one capacity size. I would think that you would want a capacity that's affordable for that particular site that probably would prohibit you from adding additional houses too, isn't there? that probably would prohibit you from adding additional houses too, isn't there? I'll wait till you raise your head back up.
Yes, actually, for each house, the septic or the onsite sewer system is designed for the size of house you have, the number of bedrooms, and the number of possible people living there. So.
So you wouldn't have anybody adding on to it anyway, because it would exceed the capacity for that particular system that you have?
Correct.
But I thought that he said that if a subdivision goes in, they're going to have capacity.
Mm-hmm. Work on the south side of the city first. You'll notice that there's some red and yellow areas that are highlighted, and then there's also a light green. And the light green is where the sewer NID area is. And some of these properties are not within the NID, they are all separate outside of, they didn't join when given the chance. The red properties are the ones that would have the potential to come in, and the yellow are the ones that are currently on septic systems. So, as you look at the properties, they're all adjacent to one another if, even in the north, where we have some that are existing and the potential to add on, the neighbors are already on an onsite system. So this isn't something that would be right in the middle of a neighborhood.
So on some of these that were annexed in, that was one of the conditions of the annexation, is they wanted to stay on their septic system, and they, some of them may not have come into the town, into the city and start paying taxes if we would have required that of them?
By virtue of the fact that there wasn't a sewer solution for them to attach to, they were allowed to stay on their septic system. Just as with many, for an example, on Vesper Street, we had a residence that was on an onsite sewer solution. It became in disrepair, and we called, we gave them the notice that they were going to have to abandon the septic system and then extend and attach to the Blue Springs Sewer System, which they did within about 95 days. So, it'd be the same situation here, and most people would rather be off of the onsite system. It's just more reliable to be on the city system than on the onsite system. But this does give an opportunity for people with large lots to go ahead and develop their private home as opposed to a development. And the situation is what this is designed to do.
Any other comments or questions?
If I may?
Yes.
And, Chris, just correct me if I'm wrong, just kind of what I'm gathering from what you're saying is that, that, one, they'll have to come before us to get the permit, we have to approve the permit. The council will be a part of these transactions, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, and a septic tank usually is built for the size of the house that is being serviced by, or that way. If they would come back and say, split the property or add additional lots onto that property, they would have to come back and get re-permitted because they'd have to enlarge the system they have, or is that wrong?
You were right, all up until the point where they would have their own separate system. If you've got a septic, an onsite system for one house, that's for that one house.
Okay, so then they would, the other houses that they subdivided would have to come back before us, though, and still be approved for a permitting, which would give us an opportunity that if, say, this looks like it's heading down a road towards a development, we could stop and say, at this point, you need to come back and attach to sewer. So I think we still have some oversight in all this.
Yes.
Does this come through the council?
Yes, it does, Your Honor. It's Section 1I of the Recommended Changes, says the issuance of the permit is approved by the City Council of Blue Springs.
Your honor?
Yes.
I have one question for our city attorney. Is there any ministerial duty to approve attached to this ordinance in any way?
No, I don't believe there would be. This is a privilege. Sewer service is a privilege, it's not a right.
Okay, thank you.
Very interesting discussion here. Okay, Councilman Fowler?
I'll let the city attorney kind of help me on the wording of this, but my concern is, again, given that there is capacity, I'm not acquiring a single homeowner to do all the infrastructure improvements, but if there is an easement going across their property, if there is a sewer line going across their property, and there is capacity because they're putting a big subdivision next to them, I suggest that they do have to join. So, how would I make that a motion to amend?
You could ask that... Let's see, I'm looking for the, item three, where it says may not be further subdivided, item three, and also, there was a section on the public works that it has to be defunct and beyond repair, that would be G. Both of those sections and Section 3 of the bill would need to be changed to read that when sewer becomes available, they would need to hook on. Most cities that do that have a foot distance, it's 100 feet for residences usually, and that's common, that when there is sewer within 100 feet of the home, then they have to, they have to connect.
But if it goes across their property, that couldn't be a trigger?
Well, in other cities, it's 100 feet for other residences.
For residents, but not?
Not necessar, I mean, you could have 80 acres, and 70 acres over, you could have a sewer line, and it would defeat the purpose really of allowing them to have the permit. And that's why most cities have put a distance, you could, I've seen cities that have had 300 feet. If you're within 300 feet, you must, you must connect. And so that would be how you would amend it, it would be that it's a failing system or sewer is available within so many feet of the residence.
Do you have a preference on how you would like to make the motion?
I would suggest the 300 feet, but I guess I'll, I mean, before I go through such a complicated motion, I'll ask if there's any support for it. And if there is, I'll certainly make that motion.
Well, you probably have to make the motion and then figure that out. Make the motion, if you get a second on it, then we can have a discussion and kind of see what the council position is on it. So, you make that motion?
Yes, I do, if the city attorney is.
And you're using 300 feet as the baseline then? 300, within 300 feet, or it becomes unfunctional?
Sure.
Dysfunctional, okay.
Well, what I would suggest then is that the end of subsection G, where there's a place of covenant on the property, it says when they have to connect, and that's contractually enforceable by the city, is not just defined in this report, that we would add to the end of that line of subsection G, and that's in Section 2 of the ordinance, for sewer is within 300 feet of the residence, and that we would add that same language to the end of subsection 3, 715,060.
That's exactly the way I would have said, thank you.
Okay, you've heard Councilman Fowler's motion as indicated by our city attorney. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now, point of discussion.
And I have a question. As a practical matter, Mr. Sandy, how far are these residences proposed to be far away from the sewer line? Is it more than 300 feet?
At this point, they're vacant properties, and I'm not sure where they plan to put the houses.
Okay.
Any other?
I'd like to know how reasonable 300 feet is, but I have absolutely no feeling for any of it. I mean, I know how long it is.
One in Phoenix, maybe?
Our previous number that we had in the ordinance was 100 feet from the property line for residential and 300 feet from the property line for commercial. If we do it from the residence, it's possible that if you were in the middle of an 80-acre parcel, that you, there wouldn't be sewer within 300 feet, even if they took it across the, we'll say, the far west boundary. So, I'm not sure if that's going to actually...
Can you do anything?
I don't know if that's going to answer Councilman Fowler's concern.
But I think mine is more about the time limit that they would have, in other words, leaving it open until the system fails, if there is a system available, that's my concern mostly.
To kind of put it in perspective, most of you know I grew up in Arkansas, and I didn't even have that, I had outhouses, so anyway, so, you know, anything is a step up. But if you go down to Lake of the Ozarks, most of the properties down there, at least in where our places are, everybody's on septic. And at 9603 Blue Ridge Boulevard, where our church is, which is basically Banister and Blue Ridge, up until three years ago, we were on septic, right in the midst of Kansas City. And the neighbors no longer wanted to do that, and so they voted an NID. And the church is assessed just like everybody else, and we actually did have to pay for it, and we were being assessed for the next 10 years to pay for that system. So, for whatever it's worth, at least we will avoid any spills and environmental problems by going on the city's sewer system.
Your honor?
Yes.
May I just maybe offer something for the council to consider? This does relate to our development policies, and typically, from time to time, we have used the Development Advisory Committee as a sounding board for changes. In fact, Mr. Allen, I believe you're currently getting ready to work with the DAC on updating our Unified Development Code. Maybe you've had some meetings, or you're getting ready for those meetings. Is this something that the council would like to punt back to that group, because that, the Development Advisory Committee has not reviewed this? Have they? Have they had any input from them?
No, sir, we didn't run it through the DAC.
Right. So, if the council, if you're prepared to act tonight, that's fine, but if you feel more comfortable perhaps redirecting and sending it back, I'm certain that, the last I talked to Mr. Tharp, he was interested in keeping this moving forward, but did not have an imminent date for when they were going to begin construction. So I'll just make that as a suggestion or an option to you, if you feel more comfortable, and perhaps they could evaluate the issue that Councilman Fowler has raised, and might be able to come up with an acceptable amendment or solution that the council would like.
Of course, your pleasure. Councilman Levesey?
Are there any other codes that require action of the residents upon something like this happening? Usually, my understanding of most of our codes is there's usually a grandfathering process, until at which point a significant amount of change happens to the property, like with sidewalks or sign code, that that's what then triggers the property owner to have to update their property. Is there anything else, any other ordinances, that when the city takes action, that requires the resident to take action? Would this be unique in that, if we pass something like this?
I can't speak for the whole code, but in utilities, there is not.
Most things have, they're grandfathered in until at which point 51% of the property is changed, or whatever, or something like that.
Until it goes through the process with community development, full new permit, and then make a substantial change.
Okay.
Right now, there is a motion on the table and a second to make the amendment that was read, so.
Your honor?
Councilman Quabell?
It occurs to me that I kind of, in principle, support what Councilman Fowler is recommending, although I'm thinking back to totally unrelated to this ordinance in regards to requiring owners of billboards to tear them down, that essentially finds some kind of trigger outside of their control that causes them to spend money to get rid of something. And I'm thinking about the comment that Chris Sandy made about the case where, you know, you grant, you grant somebody this option, and then three years later, a sewer comes through and a brand-new septic system is essentially forced to be, to be taken out of service. And I wonder whether or not, you know, if I were a landowner sitting out there with perfectly working sewer system, and I came along and had to spend $15,000 to connect to, connect to the city system when the city had already approved me having a sewer, if that wouldn't be a potential point for litigation that we might not want to head down, unless there was some compelling reason to put them on there, other than the fact that it was just available.
Councilman Levesey?
I think that's my concern as well. I'm concerned that action from the city and action from the government as a whole would then require a property owner to spend money that's not budgeted or planned for. Now, granted, it would be part of the covenant that they would know ahead of time, so it's something they could theoretically have an escrow for, but the way it's written now and the way staff have presented it is essentially consistent with our codes overall, and so I think it makes sense to continue with that precedent and say, once there's significant improvement of the property, once the septic system has failed, whatever the trigger is that is normally the, our case, that that would be consistent with this code as well. I don't know that making sewer systems unique and requiring something just because the city or a developer happened to decide that land was worth developing is worth requiring a property owner to also do, as Councilman Quabell just mentioned, abandon something that they may have put in a year or 15 years ago. So I would prefer it stay more consistent with how we normally, our normal operating procedures.
Rather than decide tonight, if Councilman Fowler and Councilman Kopepper would like to withdraw the motion, maybe we can have a motion refer this back to the Development Advisory Council to come back with a recommendation on a later date? You want to do that?
I have one more comment on that.
Okay.
I respect that it can be perceived that way, at the same time, I suppose if there was a development that is quite a distance away, and the line does go through there, I can understand that point, but honestly, I think I'm thinking about the situation where the subdivision is fairly close to this property owner, and it could be impacting their property values to be, you know, close to a septic system. So, that's the situation I'm thinking of, protect out of the people's property values. If you guys want to send it back, I'm certainly.
Yeah, all of you make some good points, and maybe we need to refer it back to them so they can factor in all the discussion that I'm sure Mr. Sandy will take back to them.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, is there a motion referred to the Development Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion, Cavers? Yes.
Just for the council clarification, Mr. Allen, can you remind us who's on the Development Advisory Committee, and how soon will that group be meeting to discuss the other UDC items?
Presently, looking to see who's on the Development Advisory Committee, but they have not met in a while.
That was a test.
They have, you're correct, they have not met in a while, but yes, I was just looking at the code for that again, looking here. Number of folks are related to the building industry, some planning commissioners, and then staff as well. Councilman Culpepper is the liaison from the council to that question. But again, as Mr. Johnson noted, we are preparing to bring the UDC to them probably within the month or so, but we could certainly bring this much sooner, kind of what their appetite for the UDC changes.
Okay. Your honor? I would suggest that we try to move this sooner, if possible, just to keep the ball rolling. I don't think it's necessarily fair for a developer to have to wait 30 days for this to meet, and then have to come back through us, and so if we can kind of keep the ball rolling on this, I think we should.
Well, check with Mr. Tharp and see. Yeah, the next council meeting is the 17th of February, and I don't know if we can be mobilized that quickly, but certainly we'll pursue it tomorrow, and I will have a conversation with Mr. Tharp to revisit his schedule as well, and we'll see, we'll keep it moving.
Okay, so it's been referred back to the Development Advisory Committee, okay. We'll move on to the introduction arena bill 4360.
First reading of bill number 4360, an ordinance extending the time to file the final plat for Cosentino's Price Chopper number 109 with the Jackson County Recorder's Office.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4360, an ordinance extending the time to file the final plat for Cosentino's Price Chopper number 109 with the Jackson County Recorder's Office.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4532.
That brings us to merril announcements. Monday, February 16th is President's Day, and the city offices will be closed. The following day, Tuesday, February 17th, at 6:30 here at the Municipal Annex, will be the next city council meeting. Thoughts of the pundit? During the month of February each year, we celebrate Black History Month, and I always share a quote from someone that has made a difference in all of our lives. But I'm going to start out with an African proverb this evening, and it goes like this, "God gives nothing to those who keep their arms crossed," end quote. But the actual quote tonight comes from Coretta Scott King, and I quote, "Hate is too great a burden to bear. It injures the hater more than it injures the hate it," end quote. That brings us to visitors. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms from anyone, which would bring us to... Did you want to do that? Did you want to read it?
Yes, Mayor, I have what would be the appropriate motion.
Yes, I'm going to defer to our city attorney, and once she reads it, someone can say, "I move that." All right.
The appropriate motion would be to move that this body go into an executive session pursuant to Section 610.021 Subparagraph 2 revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of having discussions regarding real estate transactions where public knowledge may adversely affect legal considerations thereof, and that this body stand adjourned at the close of such session.
Is there a second?
Second.
On executive session, we should roll call it, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're going to take about a two or three-minute break to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.